Well, good evening everyone and welcome to the October 6th edition of the General City Council, regular City Council meeting. Uh, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Maloney.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember Stein.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy.
Here.
Councilmember Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick. Absent, Mayor Troutman.
Here. Would you please Ryan and ask Bradley Buck to come forward for the invocation?
Father, I know that you care about Canyon City, that you care about this meeting. So I come to you in the name of the Lord Jesus. I pray that truth will prevail here. I also pray that grace will prevail here. I pray you will help us to remember that we all answer to you, that there is one judge. I pray that you will have your way and that what is best for the city of Canyon City as a whole will be accomplished here tonight. Thank you for the wisdom that only you can give and thank you for hearing us and caring enough to work in every one of our lives. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have several people that have requested to speak. We have, the first one right on top is Rick Retzlaff. Come on down Rick.
About six or seven months ago, I put in a paper with signatures about code enforcement on the fence and maybe changing that. And I haven't heard anything from you guys, so I wanted to touch base on that. And then I also wanted to comment on the tax on here that's going to be for amusement. And I wanted to just say, keep in mind that we're a tourist city and a lot of people will stop coming here if they can't afford to come here. They'll go somewhere that they can go, which Colorado has a lot, a lot of stuff, Garden of the Gods. I mean, you guys all know how great Colorado is. And it's going to hurt people business-wise and being able to function. We're already a small community and we depend on that. So I would ask you guys to really take that into consideration tonight and think about what you're doing. And what's going on with the fence code? Anybody?
I'd have that factored here. I don't know. I know you submitted it. I know it was been considered. Do you know anything more about it?
It's been quite a while. I know you're not that busy.
Yeah, right.
Alright, let's get on it.
Right. Thank you Rick. I can't, is it Michelle? Is it Maverick? Jax?
Madeline.
Madeline. I'm sorry, I can't read your handwriting. Come on up Madeline.
You can't read my handwriting because that's how I got into medical school. And I flunked it since kindergarten. But I know how to spell even if you can't tell.
No, I know, huh?
Um, I've been a resident of Fremont County since 1988 and had a medical practice in Penrose for that period of time until I retired in 2017. And I wanted to talk about living in Fremont County, which has been an amazing experience. People are very kind here, very kind-hearted. So it was with sadness that I heard about people being cruel to each other. And so I just wanted to say something about free speech. What I try to do in my life is to speak with kindness, truthfully, timeliness, and harmoniously. And I hope that we can all learn to do that. I, like I said, I've had wonderful experiences with people in this county. If I, the one time I had a flat tire, someone had stopped to help me within a minute. And that's the kind of people we have here. So I know people have kindness in their heart. And I just hope that people will take the route that Erica Kirk took, which is about love and forgiveness and to be kind to each other and harmonious. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Charles Mathias? Come on out Charles. You want to talk about wildfire danger and mitigation?
Good evening council. My name is Charles and I'm a resident and homeowner here in Canyon City, specifically up on North Fifth Street at the base of the Hogsback area. I've been involved in wildland firefighting for almost 10 years and I've come before today to ask that you help address the risk of wildland fire in our community. When I moved into my home, I was concerned by what I saw. Behind the homes along North Fifth Street, overgrown and combustible brush backs up to every single property. While some people have space between their homes and the wildland, for many people, the brush butts up against their fences, their sheds, and their trees, creating a continuous line of fuel leading to people's homes. There's no barrier or fuel break where a wildland fire could be stopped if one were to start in the Hogsback area. Some of you may remember back in May, there was a structure fire there on Fifth Street. It was very windy that day and the fire blew embers from where it originated and caught the house next door on fire. Both homes suffered significant damage with the house that was upwind being nearly totally destroyed. That instance was a true tragedy, but I believe we narrowly averted a catastrophe at this community. There had been recent rains and the yearly greenup had just begun, but if that had not been the case, or the fire had started just a few weeks earlier, the winds would have pushed the fire into the Hogsback area and endangered the homes of everyone who lives in that neighborhood. I'm asking you to take this situation seriously and take appropriate action. It's the city's responsibility to upkeep the entire Hogsback open space and create safe conditions for the residents there. I would recommend a fuel break where the open space land meets the private properties of a minimum of 15 feet wide to meet the defensible space recommendations of the Colorado State Forest Service and to provide firefighters a chance to defend homes if a fire were to break out. Now that summer's passed and the majority of fire season is over, however, as we saw with the Marshall Fire in years past, wildfire is never completely out of the question. The time to act is now and I urge you to take definitive action on this important matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you be able to concise, I think there's a little more concise and get them to me or to Ryan?
Absolutely.
That's also a function of a fire department, which is a special district.
I can do that.
I saw you had that on your phone. You can email it or, do you have it written down?
I have it written down in an email right now. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Dennis Mann?
Thank you. My name is Dennis Maun.
Maun, sorry.
And I would just like to make some comments about the censure event only Tracy that is under consideration. Let me begin by saying that I find the murder of Charlie Kirk to be a tragic and horrific event. I abhor political violence in any form, or no matter what the source is or the ideology, it's not what America is supposed to be about. In the days following Mr. Kirk's murder, Republican Alaska Governor Mike Dunleavy wrote this in a letter to his fellow Alaskans. Charlie was a fierce defender of the First Amendment. Free speech was not an abstract principle to him, but a lived commitment. He understood that the right to speak freely, to debate, and to disagree without fear is not merely one freedom among many. It is the cornerstone on which our country was built, the very framework that allows every other freedom to exist. This God-given right and the others detailed in the Constitution separates America from the rest of the world. Mr. Kirk himself stated, hate speech does not exist legally in America, and he emphasized that all forms of speech, ugly, gross, and evil speech, are protected by the First Amendment. He believed that the First Amendment safeguards the right to express ideas even if they are controversial or offensive. Today, we sit in this chamber as this body considers punishing one of its own members for exercising her First Amendment right to free speech. And this punishment comes not because of something she said, but because of something she shared without comment on Facebook. And so I have to ask, do you think Mr. Kirk would have approved of punishing someone because they exercised their First Amendment right to free speech? I think not. The article that Ms. Tracy shared did not celebrate the murder of Mr. Kirk, and in fact, the author stated clearly that she did not believe anyone should be murdered because of their views or for any other reason for that matter. No, if anyone here actually bothered to read the article, she challenged and criticized his views, but in no way approved or condoned violence as a response to views with which she disagrees. So I ask, who is this body to so publicly vilify and possibly punish Ms. Tracy for sharing a writing that you may not agree with? Have you become the thought police of George Orwell's 1984? Must we all now be fearful of committing thought crime if we dare say something that you disagree with? Was her sharing that post really so egregious? Or are you just looking for someone to lash out at in your anger and she was an easy target? You know, the First Amendment, and I emphasize it's the First Amendment, was not written to protect speech that the government or the populace agrees with. For that, the founders needn't have wasted their time. No, it was written precisely to protect speech that some or even many may find distasteful. So I suggest that this body should think long and hard before they consider a punishment of one of their members for exercising that right to free speech. That censure would be wrong in every possible way and will reflect poorly on the image of the city and those of you who profess to govern it portraying it as an island of intolerance.
Good evening. My name is Jared Post. I've been a resident of Canyon City since 2016. I want to give thanks to our civic government as well as our officers for their service here tonight. With the processes occurring in our local government, I wanted to add my piece. I come from rural western Nebraska with a background in ranching and farming. I grew up with the purveying morals that you can disagree, but you do not bring hatred to another neighbor's door. I am a non-denominational Christian. I will let a verse speak. Whoever claims to love God yet hates a brother or a sister is a liar. 1 John 4:20. I spent five years in the United States Marines as an active-duty infantryman. Conduct yourself with bearing was an absolute in my training and what I demanded from my fellow Marines. I use the art of perspective when stress comes. We are surrounded by stress, are we not? But I do not have to ruck 20 miles with a 65-pound pack today. I do not have to go to a Marine brother's funeral today. I spent time in countries with no infrastructure, harsh military, governmental corruption, detrimental living conditions. These people still greeted us with smiles. They shared their food. They showed us the power of kindness and positivity. I have brothers that paid the ultimate sacrifice for this country that they gave willingly. It is my fervent vow to myself that I will not make ill use of this opportunity that they and others like them gave me. I will approach that with gratitude. I will do this by conducting myself with bearing, even when I'm infuriated with people's actions. I'm embarrassed and saddened that people kept this community, came to this civic building with chaos, hate, malice, and discontent with the fact that they disagreed with a social media post or a political view. They should have come professionally. They should have come and spoke with bearing and tact. What did they do? They posted her home address on social media. It has been harassed in disgusting form since then. They debased her husband as he lies in a hospital bed. They cultivated a following and actively sought to disrupt an entire meeting. They did this not because they were in danger, not because they lost power, not because their home was destroyed, a non-threatening internet post. Think about that. This said, political violence is foundationally wrong. There is no right time to kill an unarmed person. No one should celebrate the death of somebody they disagree with. Did anybody talk in the last meeting about Colorado Evergreen High School students that were shot on the same day that Charlie Kirk was? Mr. Kirk's murder was horrific, but so is every American shooting occurring when it involves defenseless people being targeted. Yes, I think Councilwoman Tracy should have her account marked private. I do think governmental positions should hold a standard of professionalism, but then what's our excuse? We are civic community members. If you are citizens, adults, and American citizens, conduct yourself with proper respect. We have a chance to look at each other today. We have a chance to say, do we stand for hypocrisy? Will we demand freedom while railing against somebody using theirs? We have a chance to not let national politics destroy us. We could be positive to one another. We could bring respect and bearing to one another. I feel we should be grateful for our opportunity. If we are grateful, if we are respectful, I promise, you will gain respect back. Thank you.
Thank you Jared. Megan Marier.
Hi, I'm Megan Mercier. Nobody ever gets it right, it's okay.
I'm sorry.
Uh, thank you all, first of all, for the keen attention that you're paying to every person who steps up to this podium. I've been to, or I've seen other city council meetings where different council members in different places don't do that. So the fact that you are paying such attention to what every citizen has to say, I find absolutely commendable. And I would also say is a sign of something that I've noticed as I've lived in Canyon City, which is like this very large sense of kindness. There's so many nice people here and I think that we can continue to make these choices to be nice to one another, to do nice things for one another. I came up here to speak about the censorship and I can only underline what other people have already said in that the suggestion here was something that was made out of a really emotional reaction on behalf of a couple citizens or perhaps many citizens, but there are many more who haven't had their opinions heard. And also, I think it was pointed out in a past meeting that there is no code of conduct, especially for social media, set forth for council members. And I would invite you to explore that option as a path forward, as a way for you all to underline what you all can do in your non-partisan positions here on city council. I think that's a much more responsible way to move forward with this issue rather than a regressive censorship. And once again, thank you for your time. I would also like to just personally express my support for the excise tax. I understand that times are tight for people. Times are tight for me as a young person. I would say that anybody who can afford to take a rafting trip, to take a train up to the Royal Gorge, they can probably afford a few extra dollars to support our city. I come from, I come from Bailey actually. I grew up there and a lot of young families have moved out as there's less things for them to do. So I invite you all to create a more welcoming space for our next generations. Thank you.
Thank you Megan.
Good evening, Dennis Weed. I'll be, actually unlike usually, I'll be pretty brief this evening. I was just going to say, I believe the excise tax is a mistake. Regardless of the result of the ballot question, there is not going to be a winner. It's, it's going to cause some problems regardless of how that goes. And I think it would be wise if we took a step back and considered some alternatives. I've suggested a couple and I'm, I know there's more out there. That's really all I have to say on that, except that obviously Amendment 14 is up this evening regarding the excise taxes and what it's going to do. Obviously, that's a good idea to approve that in the event that the excise tax does pass. But like I said, I think the excise tax itself is a mistake. There's alternatives that we haven't explored but are there. And I'd like to see you all withdraw your support for the ballot issue. Thank you.
Dennis, you and I have known each other for a long time, right?
Yes.
We were on council together, right?
Yes.
Would you send me those, you stated that, and I don't recall what you had said were alternatives? I'd like to know more about that. Would you be able to send them to me? Not tonight, but when you have time.
Yeah.
You know how to get ahold of me. You have before.
Oh. I ran India.
Many times before. I would, and again, I'd appreciate just seeing what those alternatives, I probably know them, but would like to refresh myself on them.
Sure.
And I mean that sincerely.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Alright, thanks Dennis.
Thanks. Share them with the rest of council if you would.
I would do that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If you'll get them to me. Okay, I have this one right. Susan Gordon. Do I have that right?
You got it right.
Alright.
Goodie.
I've been killing names here all night.
Goodie, easy one.
It is. And it's well-written too, by the way.
Thanks. I'm not a doctor. I'm an organic farmer. I've lived here in Lincoln Park for, since, well, I've had my farm since 2001. I've always felt a bit like a fish out of water because I am a pacifist. I'm, you couldn't, I wear the label leftist with pride. But I, even though I felt like a fish out of water, I've always felt like I could go out on the corner and express my views. I can wear my "Support of Palestine, Stop the Genocide" button. I can hold my "Stop the Iraq War" sign. And I've always felt like I could express myself here in this community without fear of any, well, there is some, a lot of middle fingers, but besides that, I haven't ever felt like my, I've been at risk. I mean, and that, and I think we can all agree, that's like one of the great things about this country. And it does, as others have said, set this country apart from others where autocracy reigns. And we certainly don't want that here. I am here to speak in support of Councilwoman Tracy. I think she is a brave woman and I think she's taken some positions that aren't necessarily, haven't necessarily been popular in this space. I don't know why she's not here. I certainly hope it's because, that it's not because she feels unsafe. I mean, because that would be a pretty sad statement about this. I mean, you're all good people and thank you for your service. I mean, I would never want your job, but someone's got to do it. And I'm, I'm very glad that, you know, Councilwoman Tracy has been very active in this community. I know she's served on the Cotter Community Board and, and so for her to take unpopular positions or to speak out, I think that she has that right and that needs to be protected. And we certainly, as others have said, don't want to be known as a community that, you know, silences free speech. Nor do we want to continue to be the only community this size without a pool. So that's my plug for that. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you Susan. Justin Scott. Justin here? Oh, I didn't see you sitting there.
Justin Scott, Mayor Troutman, council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you yet again. As you can probably guess, I'm back for the same subject, the firearms ordinance, that we've struggled with for so long. You already know my position, but I just want to reiterate, we, we really, as a community, the majority of us want no restrictions. And it's not because some of the things proposed are so unreasonable, that what is often said, well, these are reasonable restrictions. But many of us are very tired of what has happened to our nation and how we have descended from our beginning and our founding. And the right to keep and bear arms was and should always be a complete and plenary unrestricted right. Any reasonable restriction of that right is in fact not reasonable because it is a right that shall not be infringed. Any restriction is an infringement and that's why so many of us have continued to implore you, make Canyon City different from places that do not respect our founding. Let's have a complete exercise of our right. Thank you again.
Thank you Justin. Thank you. Rob Gilkerson. Where's Rob? Come on down Rob. Can you get there?
Yeah.
We'll give you a hand.
I go to the platform here, I got a little trick here on this machine that elevates me up. Give me a second here.
Well, that's pretty spiffy.
Yeah. $1,500 upgrade, it's worth it. I can finally get stuff off the top of my shelves and my cabinets at home.
I think I need to get one of those to get me a little height.
Yeah, you probably could use it, couldn't you?
Don't, don't listen to him. Don't. Bye John.
Anyway, just here to support Emily. I think censorship is wrong. There's nothing in that article that celebrated his death. So, here to, again, support Emily. I think we're all being played, including myself, from the top, from JD Vans down. It's just wrong. Anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you Rob. Note that John Hamrick has come in. John had a really tough time getting here and I know if you've ever flown, you've never had a delay or a cancellation or anything else. Who hasn't had that? Isn't that something? You go, how many times have you been delayed?
The, are we talking flying or what?
Getting in here, you were in Salt Lake and all over.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you all for speaking. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate that. Interesting. So we, at this point, are, any council members have any announcements or, Amy, go ahead.
Thank you. I just have a couple. One, I just wanted to make sure that folks are aware that our local history museum is a federal repository for fossils collected on public lands. This has been in place since 2014. It's a memorandum of understanding with the Bureau of Land Management, which essentially means that when somebody finds a fossil here in Fremont County, our museum is actually able to keep it within our community instead of it having to be sent to another organization up in Denver or even in DC. So I just wanted to pass that along because it was new information for me and I wanted to make sure that others were aware of it as well. I serve as the city's liaison to the history and, history museum and library board and they recently had the Bureau of Land Management come in and evaluate them and give them some recommendations on how they could upgrade and continue to do a great job of preserving those fossils. So if folks haven't been into the museum lately to see the fossils that have been discovered here in Fremont County, highly recommend. I have two other quick things. We also, on Wednesday, Councilmember Worthington and I had the pleasure of being up at the grand opening of the Red Canyon Park Trails. So huge kudos went out to our Parks Department Superintendent Rex Brady, Foreman Jesse Young, and our recently retired city trail builder Steve Thomas. We had a pretty good turnout up there. I'd say probably 40, 50 people. And folks were just really excited about having a new trail system up there that'll help preserve that park for generations to come to hopefully help counteract some of the social trail usage that had been contributing to erosion up there. So just three new trails and... So just three new trails, and I know the folks who are neighboring there, including Red Canyon Stables and some of our equestrian community members, are really excited about that. And then lastly, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Royal Gorge Bridge. They hosted not only the high school track meet two weeks ago, but also the largest ever rim-to-rim race this weekend, which is Star Point's largest annual fundraiser. They just do a phenomenal job of supporting our community nonprofit events and always welcome folks to come up there and use that as a memory-making venue. So shout out to them.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Emily, go right ahead.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. First, I just wanted to thank folks who have spoken this evening in support of the First Amendment, which is for all of us, and for the personal support I've received from you all and from many other folks in the community and actually around the state. I'll say briefly, because there have been questions, some of them pretty wildly off-target about why I'm not there. My husband spent basically the last six weeks in the hospital in St. Anthony's in Lakewood, except for two and a half days, week before last, when we tried to have him at home in Canyon City. But he was too weak to be there and developed medical complications that then sent him to the ER in Canyon City. They told us that they could not deal with his complicated medical issues, so he was taken by ambulance back to St. Anthony's and spent another nine days there. Good news is, he has gone into a skilled nursing facility for rehab. I don't know whether he'll be in there several weeks or what that will look like. A word of caution to all of us, when you think you have insurance coverage for something, you may be wrong. We were told literally at the last minute by our insurance carrier that his rehab was being denied by insurance. So I wrote a very large check this morning to a rehab facility in Lakewood, and hopefully that denial will be reversed, but there's nothing that suggests that that will happen. I do have one other thing. I do want to mention that the regular monthly meeting for the Cotter Community Advisory Group is, as usual, on the third Tuesday of October, and I believe it'll be at the regular time, a hybrid meeting at 3:00 in the afternoon. That's all.
Thank you, Emily. We also have Wednesday General Government Meeting. That's at 5:00 here.
6:00, sir.
6:00? I always miss that, but I'll be here early, obviously. So one of the things that I had not known when, one of the times I was mayor, I decided to go to the library to see those big bones that we had, that were, and there were none there.
Museum, sir.
The museum, the library?
No. Go to the museum to see the fossils. Go to the library to check out books about the fossils.
Thank you for keeping me on track, Amy.
Anytime, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anytime.
Obviously, that's why they weren't at the library, were they? Okay. So, but what surprised me was that there were a lot of big fossils taken from here and sent to the Smithsonian, and we'd liked them back, and they can't find them. How do you lose a 10-foot dinosaur bone? And that, that really concerns me because we should have them here. But from now on, was it 2014?
Yes.
The Bureau of Land Management says that any fossil found here has to stay here in Canyon City, and they are in our library, in our museum. I really liked the library, by the way. I just, I gotta tell you.
Liked them both.
I liked them both, but God, that library is sure beautiful. Okay, but yeah, if you go down there, it's surprising to me how much we have, but they're not very big. They're really small, so.
That is not true, sir. You need to go back.
Oh, well, the display has big bones in it, doesn't it? Yeah.
Some of them are permanently displayed, but they're quite large. We'll go together.
I'll take you later this week.
Is it library or the museum?
We'll go to both.
The, okay. It's, it's an age thing. Okay. Let's, what? It is. You're out of order. Okay. All right, we're losing, we're losing direction here. All right. Let's go to recognitions. Anybody else that has any proclamations or any thing? Okay. Let's move on to recognitions and proclamations. I have one this evening for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Who is here representing that? Is there anyone here for that? Could you come on down and give us your name, and we'll read the proclamation?
Hi, I'm Crystal Sumter from Family Crisis Services.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. So we have a proclamation here that says, "Whereas one in every four women and one in every seven men will experience domestic violence during their lifetime, whereas approximately 15.5 million children are exposed to domestic violence every year, and whereas when a family member is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on the victim that also leave a mark on family, friends, and community at large. And whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal banner, barriers, and is sustained by societal indifference, and whereas a crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, and whereas victims should have help to find and compassion, comfort, and healing by they need, and domestic abusers should be punished to the full extent of the law, and whereas victims of violence should have access to medical and legal services, counseling, emergency, and transitional housing, and other supportive services so that they can escape the cycle of abuse. Whereas important partnerships have been formed among criminal and juvenile justice agencies, healthcare providers, allied professionals, and victim services to assist victims of domestic violence and their families, whereas we dedicate ourselves to protecting vulnerable members of our community, and whereas Fremont County has a moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence, address its brutal and destructive effects, and make ending domestic violence a local priority, now therefore it will be proclaimed by Canyon City by Mayor Preston Troutman. October is designed as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, dated today. Would you like to make some comments for us?
Well, Family Crisis Services would like to thank you for, Family Crisis Services would like to thank you for our opportunity in recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It is very important. We provide a really important service to our community, and we're proud to do that. And we hope to continue to do that successfully.
Okay. Crystal, we would like to have you come up with the proclamation, and we'll all come down and take a picture with you. Okay? Well, since I almost wore out my vocal cords, I won't be speaking the rest of the night. I'm just kidding. So. Did I applaud that? That's great, isn't it? So let's move on to a consent agenda and ask the city administrator to review the agenda and consent agenda items.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on September 15th, the Vision Committee meeting on September 17th, and the special meetings, September 11th, which is an executive session, September 23rd, which is Art Committee, and September 24th, which was the Water Committee. 8B accepts the resignation, resignation from the Art, pardon me, Public Art Committee. 8C awards bid 62-25 for North Ninth Water Work to roads construction and an amount not to exceed $133,548. 8D authorizes the city administrator to sign an agreement for professional services for cemetery expansion and GIS conversion with Galloway. That's an amount not to exceed $66,500. And 8E is to receive and file cash disbursements.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections? Amy?
Just one comment. I just wanted to thank the city and particularly our Department of Public Works and our Parks Department for moving forward with figuring out ways to reduce the overburdened sum cost of water in our cemetery. I know that that's something that we talked about, I want to say, three or four, earlier this year, as, you know, it really is something that is not in any way profitable for the city and something where we do still need to keep the expenses low, and by far the largest cost there was the use of water. And obviously, it is important, and it is in our city charter that we keep the cemetery green and looking beautiful, and I'm really excited that we're going to be looking at ways to reduce those costs sooner rather than later so that we can hopefully continue to meet both of those, those needs. So just thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Any other comments? I'd ask then for a motion in a second on the consent agenda. Jared, go right ahead. You can't push your button.
You want me to push the button?
No, no, go ahead. No, no, no.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Second, Tim? Any discussions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pretim Hemrick.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. And now we have the long-awaited and much-looked-for city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have the written reports in your packets. I think the big thing in the written reports is, as it relates to the Rhodes Avenue Stormwater Construction Project, we are not going to be doing any stormwater work there this fall. There's still work that needs to be done from ATMS and their relocation of the natural gas line there with their contractor, and because of the uncertainty of that timing, we're just not planning on doing any of the stormwater work there. We're going to defer that to the fall of 2026. And then the thing that is not in the report has to do with Justice Center Drive. There's been a lot of construction, a lot of paving was going on late last week. Justice Center is almost fully complete. We have striping and some cleanup work that'll be taking place this week and early next week, and then once that is complete, Justice Center will be open in both directions again. So that is ahead of the contracted schedule.
Amy?
Thank you. With regard to the Rhodes Avenue project, could you please share just a little bit more information about when folks who are residents there or businesses near there, when they'll know whether or not ATMS will be moving forward or what the timeline looks like so that they can better prepare?
Yeah, ATMS will have to go back, and they'll have to get their right-of-way permit or renew their right-of-way permit, and as part of that, they should be reaching out to their, to the neighborhood. We can also do what we can from, from the city side and push out any information that we have for, you know, through our public information office when we know when work will be starting over there.
Thanks. I think that would be really helpful. I know folks have been, you know, folks who live and work near there have been really placed under a significant burden over many years at this point, and, you know, it's obviously unfortunate that it sounds like it will continue for at least two more falls and winters. So I think the more that we can let them know what we know as soon as we know it, the better. I know that the city piloted a new way of pushing out that information with the Justice Center project. If that's worked well, could we, you know, even though it's ATMS's lead, we obviously will have a lot of meetings with them where we will get a lot of information with them. Is there a way that we can push out weekly updates to folks who are interested?
We, we can try. Again, because it's not our project, I don't want to guarantee that we're going to have the most accurate information through that system, but we can try and push out the information as we receive it.
Thank you. Could I ask two more questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be possible to schedule a conversation about fence height? I know it's something that we've talked about many times over the years, but could we go ahead and get that on a general government or vision committee meeting for a discussion to see where council is on it?
That would be up to council if that's something you want to do.
What was the question?
On fence height, and if we can have.
Oh, fence height?
Yeah, I think folks are continuing to face challenges with abundant deer population, you know, wreaking havoc on gardens. So I'm wondering if we can have a conversation around fence height, if there are enough council members who would like to have that conversation.
Would you like to add that to like a vision committee meeting? Can we do that?
If that's council's consensus, absolutely.
I think that sounds a good idea.
Thanks.
We'd have Patrick here and Leo. Leo? And have that discussion? Okay, so we can do that on the next, not this.
Yeah, we'll have to look and see what we have available, and we'll, as soon as I get it scheduled, I'll let council know.
Okay. All right. Rick, are you here? Did you hear that? Okay. Thank you. You betcha.
I have a question.
It's go ahead.
Unless I'm getting more senile, it is my recollection that we had an extensive discussion about fence height and deer, and we went with what is most common in this state. And we decided we weren't going to go to 10 and 12-foot high to keep deer out because honestly, some of them, I mean, you're, like, I think our normal one is, I think, is it eight feet or?
Six feet for residential backyard.
Yeah, six feet for the back and then four feet out front. But we did have extensive conversations about that, didn't we? And decided we would go with what is common in the rest of the state. So unless there's some new information about fence height that, you know, we can look at.
I think this was just a refresher of maybe what we already do and what we already have. Just do it as a refresher.
Thanks.
Is that correct? Yes, let's do that. Let's do that.
Again, it's up to council.
Rick? You realize you're only going to use the rest of your three minutes.
I'm like in school, okay? I would like to invite each and every one of you over to my property, and I'm going to let my dog out, and I want you to walk by and see if you feel safe. The problem is 50% see-through. My dog can fit through that. You're not comprehending what's going on here. And I tell you, if my dog bites somebody, you guys put this code in effect, I will file a lawsuit on all of you. It's unsafe for my dog on my side of the fence. It's unsafe for people walking by. Dogs today, a big dog can clear a four-foot fence easy. Hell, I could probably run and jump it, and I'm old. It's not safe. It's ridiculous. And the only reason we have that is so all your code enforcement can come around and look in our yards. But the safety issue here is somebody's going to get hurt, and you guys are going to be accountable.
Okay. Well, we'll bring that up a vision then, okay?
Yep.
Thanks, Rick. Any other discussions or? All right. So number 10 is discussion is censured. Would you have the, the city minister, or city administrator, would you have your staff report?
This was.
Oh, sorry, Emily, did I miss your hand? Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with my audio, so if you're past this, just let me know. I, I think on the fence issue, my recollection is along the lines of what Councilmember Stein was just saying, and I wonder if it might work better to start, rather than starting with scheduling it for a committee meeting, maybe start with, if it's okay, requesting that Patrick or someone just kind of write up a summary of the history of decisions about fence height and fence type, what decisions have been made and when, and maybe if we review that individually, then we can take the next step from there.
Yeah. I would, I agree, Emily, in certain fashion. I would. I would like to have that review in open- in open session so that the public could be here as well. If you just sent it to us individually, although it would be on the website, that wouldn't be that accessible. So, I would prefer that we just take a portion of that Vision Committee meeting, and let's review it in open. Okay? But you can send that out to us individually so we have knowledge of what's going on, but I would like that to be reviewed in an open session.
We can do that.
Okay? Let's try that. Go ahead with the censure thing.
At the last city council meeting, there was a motion to bring a censure item forward at this meeting. There was some additional discussion about whether or not the timing of that was correct. And with a discussion on Wednesday about the Code of Conduct, Mayor Protem Hamrick and Mayor Troutman had asked to continue this to a later meeting. So, I think that's up for discussion for city council at this point.
And I think that's appropriate because we're going to talk about- go ahead, John, did you want to say?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would- I would just say that- that I think that this is an important enough discussion to make sure we get it right and to take the time to make sure that we get it right because we'll be possibly setting precedent. This is not a simple issue. And the- because of those factors, I think, in addition, the other thing that I think that this does is this allows us to have the general discussion and see where we agree or disagree on- on the issues surrounding what is appropriate speech for a council person and use of- of public-facing media. There's- there's- that's- that's a pretty broad subject with a lot of different facets that I think require some discussion by council before we get to the specific censure resolution. And for that reason, that's why it's- it's my belief that it would be better to have the general discussion followed by hearing the censure motion.
Okay?
I think you would need a motion to continue this to the October 20th meeting if that's- if that's the wish of council.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make- I'll make that motion that we continue the censure resolution until our next regular city council meeting.
Okay. Second by Kathy. Emily, you had your hand up.
Yeah. I'm sorry that I didn't bring this up under the consent agenda item, but I noticed that the minutes, and we know that we do minutes in a pretty summary way because we also have the recording of meetings, but in the minutes for the previous council meeting, it does not even reflect what that motion of censure was about. It doesn't say what the proposed censure was being done for. So, I don't know whether the minutes need to be changed or not, but I think at some point, there needs to be a little bit of clarity about what I would be censured for if that's the action that council takes.
It's a question, but the minutes have already been approved? So-
Yes, I understand. I'm- I'm not trying to change the minutes. I'm just making a point that if the public reads those, if any member of the public reads those, they're not going to know what that motion was really about.
Okay. We'll have that- we'll be having a discussion Wednesday. Okay? Let you clarify.
Code- Code of Conduct discussion is Wednesday, and then this item, if the motion passed, would come back before council on the 20th with an actual resolution that lays out, I think, what Councilmember Tracy's concerns are, you know, defining what- what that censure is for and why.
Okay. So, it's been made and seconded, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Because I don't favor the motion at all, I'm going to vote no.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to a second reading, an adoption by title-only of Ordinance 14, Series 2025, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Title III of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning an Excise Tax and Amusement and Scenic Rides, Attractions, and Recreational Excursions." Do we need to have the city administrator give a staff report?
I've got a short report. This is the second reading. It passed on first reading on September 15th. There was an addition to subsection C to section 3.15.050. Also, in the meantime, at the September 15th meeting, there was discussion about adding the Royal Gorge Bridge, a surcharge of sorts to the Royal Gorge Bridge, even though it's outside the city limits. Research has been going on with that, and we do plan on bringing a ordinance to the next city council meeting regarding that topic.
Any questions to the administrator? Amy? I saw you going for your button.
Just wanted to thank the city attorneys and the city administrator for doing that research and ensuring that it was thorough and complete so that we had an ordinance that we had a great deal of confidence in, that we can consider at the October 20th meeting, that would impose a surcharge on the Royal Gorge Bridge activities that are commensurate with the activities outlined in the Excise Tax Ordinance should it pass on the ballot in November. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Nothing?
Yeah, I do. I just want to make sure as we do this, and if we is- and I've said this before, as if we get the bridge involved in this, and then we're going to have the excise tax, you know, I really want to make sure if this excise tax goes and we're collecting the revenue off the bridge for- for this operation, is the pool operation as well, you know, I think we need to be very careful on how much that tax then starts collecting. And we can say that there'll be a slush fund to use for other things, but I have a problem personally met with that. I think if you're going to tax somebody for it, you tax it and tell them what it's for, and that's it. I don't think you build an extra fund on top of it, but just my own. So, do you understand what I'm saying? So, I guess I'm saying if we- if we have our tax, and all of a sudden, we start getting collecting from the bridge as well, and all of a sudden, we're starting- we're collecting this for pool operations. And for pool operations is why we did this. I don't want to see that start being an excess above what pool operations were. And I know what this has been, you know, we could use it for this, this, and this, but that's not what the tax- I just, I'm a firm believer, if you have a tax, use it for what it's for.
And I think with the- the exception of the one caveat that we added to the ordinance the last time, which is about that commercial and private boat put in and take out, I think I'm largely in agreement with you, and I think that we need to really carefully consider as a council what that looks like. Is it a community, capital community amenity fund where we are socking all excess revenue away that is for a replacement pool 50 years from now so that it's already there? Is it, you know, that we realize two years in that, you know, oh, it doesn't need to be 2.25%? Maybe it only needs to be 2%? Like, I think we- these are conversations that we really, really need to have and that we need to dial in. So, I couldn't agree with you more.
Well, what are you- what are you saying here? Are you going to put this up for a vote?
I'm not saying anything. No, no, no. I think, I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Dennehy, I don't think either one of us is saying that changes are needed to this. I think we're just saying, like, once we, if this passes in November, once we figure out how much money-
Yes.
-is actually coming in from this and what the delta is between that and the pool operations, we need to be- have a very transparent, very public process about what that looks like.
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. I don't think there's any disagreement on that at all, at all. So, we've made the motion, right? No. So, what?
No motion yet.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just have one in deference to Councilwoman Tracy's point last time, and as I'm looking at her now, I see her hand is raised as well. But I would suggest that in 315050C, that we add the word former before Clark Station. I think everyone knows that that will not be the name moving forward, but just to really drive that home, that it is the former Clark Station property wouldn't- wouldn't go amiss. Thanks.
Emily, go ahead.
I'm just ready to make a motion when you're ready for that.
Anybody else? Well, then go right and make the motion.
Sure. Thanks. I'll move for approval of Ordinance 14, Series of 2025, on second reading with the amendment that Councilwoman Schmisher just outlined.
Second. Second made and second. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay. So, we're on to firearms ordinance, and I would invite the city administrator to have a staff report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We've got, we actually have two ordinances here based off of the direction we received at the last meeting. You have second reading for Ordinance 12. Ordinance 12 is, let me make sure I've got my notes correct on which is which, would allow concealed carry weapons within certain government buildings, but would not allow them behind the staff-only protected areas of those buildings. You also have Ordinance 16, which would allow open carry and concealed carry in the open areas of those buildings, and would not allow them behind the glass, as we refer to it. As a matter of process, what you have before you first is Ordinance 12 because that is the old business. And if that passes, I don't know that you- you don't need to hear or read Ordinance 16? Do not. If Ordinance 12 fails, then you have Ordinance 16 to consider. And I- I think this is- this is a council decision at this point.
What I have before me here says, this is 12, and then this is 16. So, how do I go about that? Would make- ask-
We go after second.
We go to the second reading first. All right. Then this is second reading, adoption by title-only of Ordinance 12, Series 25- 2025, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Chapter 9.52 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Firearms and to Partially Opt Out of Senate Bill 24131." I would ask then for a motion. Any- no, motion or a second? We'd like to make a motion?
I have a motion.
Emily?
I move for approval of Ordinance 12, Series of 2025, on second reading.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Nay.
Councilmember Maloney?
No.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
No.
Okay. Passed by 4-3 vote. So, we don't have to do the first reading?
Correct. That moots ordinance number 16.
Well, we're at the end of the line here. We'd have a executive session coming up. Okay? And we would ask someone for a motion to go into executive session. Is that correct? Make a motion?
I move that city council into- enter into executive sessions for the following purposes. Executive session to seek legal advice on specific legal issues regarding a potential process for determining the qualifications of an elected official under Article II, Section 2 of the City of Canyon City Home Rule Charter pursuant to CRS 2464024B.
Any second? Motion's been made?
Second.
Second by Kathy. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hamrick?
Aye.
Okay. Then at this point, we're adjourned. Thanks for coming.